I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting's ordered.
Recording now.
We'll be approved of the agenda.
As amended, adding a bullet point to the discussion of second week of September Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Okay, moved by Corey, second by Bob, with the addition of that bullet point to approve the agenda. Any further discussion or changes?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Approval of the minutes?
You?
Second.
Moved by Bob, second by Corey to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Claims were sent out in advance.
Moved to approve claims, authorized auditor issue checks.
Second.
Moved by Corey, second by Bob, to approve claims and authorize auditor. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. We have Tiffany Schmidt, Sheena Velez, and Shane Buchholz. Two from CBS and one from the Sheriff's Office. Various employees. Anybody want to separate one out, or do you want to do them all three?
Moved to approve pay changes for staff.
Second.
Moved by Corey, second by Bob to accept and approve all three. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have E4 crop intelligence agreement sent out to us in advance. Shelley, do you want to comment on it for Bob's sake here? Bob was not part of the conversation getting into the agreement.
So each year we have this company manage the fertilization, management of the land, what's being taken off their crop, and checking against what's new for their fertilizer keeping an eye on these forests. So we pay them annually to manage that. They work directly with the tenants. So we're not transferring all that information anymore. In three years, they'll report that to us, or they'll come annually if we want them to, to report how things are going. This is second year of three years, pre-crop years. They're offering a 10% discount if we pay by October 31st, that annual amount. Assume that's what you'll want to go with.
And this would be for County Poor Farm, land and also land by the landfill?
Correct.
Both, both of those. Just making sure that the renters don't use too much of our nutrients. Okay.
Keeping up the fertility of the land. And then this invoice also, if we would like them to contact us, or if we would like to have any interactions with them. Some selections there, but we already have them hooked up for soil testing at the end of three years. But the only thing I guess would be is if we wanted to come in and tell us a report at some point.
I think we should come in and do a report. You know, it's necessary to do it every year, but at the, nearing the end of the contract, we should hear a report. And, you know, they, what they send us each year is kind of difficult for us non-farmers to truly understand. So it's good to have them come and do a little bit of a update or a report so that we understand everything that they're discussing. So. My opinion is we should have them come and do a report.
That sounds good. So move approval of us signing the contract for October 31st payment with a report later on.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. That motion carries. You'll facilitate lining up for the on-scene report then, Shelley?
Yes.
Thank you. Board Committee update, Bob?
Opioids, meds, and still looking at getting additional dollars coming in. They are looking at proposal to have some carbon packages we can hand out to certain groups, and they can dispose of opioids or any drugs within these pouches. So once, they'll probably come here to look for our approval to spend a couple thousand dollars on those. And we'll see how the usage is and then see if it's worth a reorder or not. For example, like the medical examiner, if they're out and about talking to the family, they could just give them a pouch and they could dispose of medications right there, or other entities. But that'd be one example. So that was discussed now becoming, in her report. I did receive a call from United Way, and they're asking us about, you know, becoming a partner again. And I do understand the board said no last time, and I can understand that probably only three employees were doing auto deduct. But I did wonder, should we entertain just having the flyers? Or is that something that is out of bounds?
I don't know that it's out of bounds. I think my point a year ago was that, you know, we have some semblance of United Way in other communities as well, and I don't know that it's right for one to be able to send to all employees. That was my concern.
Mark, it has no solicitation policy in it, so typically things are just done through the break rooms.
Okay.
United Way had been just kind of grandfathered, and I think just.
Yeah. I understand that, you know, having three, it doesn't make sense for us to do the work for employee deduct. But if they wanted to do it in the impating, are you saying the only option would just be able to put something in the break room?
Or the handle? That'd be my interpretation, the handle. That's not all I mean.
That would be my understanding, although I think it opened up to solicitation from multiple entities, which it'll execute use for a time.
Okay. It's a difficult subject because they do good work. There's a lot of good that comes out of that. A lot of that money does stay locally compared to a lot of solicitation. So that's what's challenging about it. But in the interest of fairness, if we could figure out a way to make certain that it's countywide.
Maybe that'll ask me, if they have a flyer, they should allow other United Way.
Partner with other United Ways to.
Yep. Okay. So is it okay that I talk to them saying, yeah, they can get a flyer to put in our break rooms, but long as it has all the United Ways within Breamer County?
I like that.
Okay. We'll do that. And then I guess one more question for Cassandra. The health insurance you sent out. So it looked like we had a little bit of higher deficit in the, is that just because of the time? You know, we're early in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
But no concerns?
No, I wasn't concerned. We actually, then with, that went through September, then with October, we got back, I want to say a little over $65,000. So kind of evens out. And, but yeah, we'll have to watch it to see where it trends for the year. But right now, I think we're.
Maybe you could put it on next week's agenda since you're going to put it on the agenda for a short update so we could not be worried about having a discussion on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I did got the email, that might worrying or not. Thank you.
Okay, November Board Meeting. It was brought to our attention that November 11th is Duckman's Day, and it's Law Board Meeting Day. So Shelley is saying that we're going to be canvassing the election on the 12th. My recommendation will be have the meeting on the 12th.
I move that, we move our November 11th meeting to the 12th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Back to Board and Committee Updates. Sorry.
Are you done? I'm done. Last Thursday, I met with Cassandra and Barb and members of the Excel Group to discuss potential of putting our health insurance out to quote. Talked about all our different comprehensive packages. It was a good meeting. They'll be back, when we decide, the 28th? It's 21st or 28th we decided?
21st or 28th depending on.
How quick they could to get somebody. So, so we'll bring them back, an RFP proposal for them. Also had building planning update with Scott, Eric, and Patrick on Thursday afternoon. Basically kind of planning what we're doing for tomorrow, getting all that set and ready to go. And then Thursday afternoon, Andrea Woodard from ISAC called. They're working to plan a webinar, tentatively for October 29th for all counties, to discuss the buy-in on the amicus brief support for the Shelby story case in Supreme Court. So ISAC is also investing in that. It'll be a fairly small threshold for the counties, probably around that $500 mark per county. So really good news there. I'm working, Dean Cluse from Wright County myself, for working with ISAC to put the itinerary together for that webinar.
Thank you. I did not have any.
Speaking of ISAC, they were going to come and do a, you know, a road show. We told them no because of our new warehouse. Should we tell them? Since that's going to be delayed, should we tell them to come, or?
But that was going to happen sometime in 2026, wasn't it?
And so after the courthouse is done.
That's, well, that was the final one we left them with? I knew we had delayed it to them, so.
Keep on delaying it, or?
We go to bid and if we do approve bids and change, I think we have a more definitive timeline then. And we could place something in the schedule then, or at least a point of significant completion maybe where we would feel comfortable bringing them in.
Who was our contact? Was that you, Shelley? Why don't we have Shelley contact them and see what their preference would be? They may want to wait till we're at least know a decision as Corey's indicating, or they may want to say, no, let's go ahead and do it.
Unless you want to showcase the building to them, or do you want to just meet with them here? Any questions?
I'm guessing they will be more than happy to come back up for a.
Grand opening.
If we get it accomplished, a grand opening, I think, so.
So let's just meet with them?
Let's have Shelley discuss with them and let them be the decision makers.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we got two minutes. Aaron, you want to grab the hot seat there?
Sure.
And we'll be ready for you when we start.
We are recording now.
Yep.
Okay, Aaron, you asked to, you put on the agenda to discuss whether or not the county farm rented land should continue to be exempt or non-exempt for taxation purposes.
I asked. I didn't ask.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I just, yeah, give an update on what you found out and how other counties are doing it, and how this will impact and stuff like that.
Sure, sure. No, I mean, I sent all three of you an email, I don't know, month ago or so, on this topic. It's something that's been on my radar for a little while. Some other correspondents here recently kind of brought it to the forefront, I guess, with it. You know, and just looking through, at Iowa Code 427.1 subsection two, it talks about municipalities. And, you know, if it's not devoted to public use and there's pecuniary profit, then it should be taxable. So I guess that's where, I mean, I, this is something that's just through our association. It's something that's been talked about over the years and just recently again on that. I know other counties do rent out their farmland and are taxed on it. I don't have an exact number on that. I mean, I could probably find out a little bit better numbers if you wanted to, or not. But I know Ajoian County is kind of going through the same thing and looking at changing it too with it. So I guess if you have any questions in particular, I am, I'd be happy to answer it.
I mean, FY '27.
Correct.
It would not impact.
So in my years, Cassandra can maybe help on this, on this part of it. So it'd be, I'd be changing it for 1126 valuations, which is payable fall '27, spring of '28. So I think that'd be FY '28, as when it would.
So FY '26, no changes, FY '28, and then the property tax statement would go to Shelley?
I'd probably, it'd just go to 415. I mean, we could put a mail to on it, attention to auditor's office, I guess. I don't know on that part of it, I guess. We'd have to have some discussion.
You'll figure out who goes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you'll have the same thing with the school.
Possibly. We're researching some other ones with that, so.
Could you say, I mean, Wabley Shaw Rock has farmland, so what other?
They have about eight acres of their 40, I think that North Ridge is on, so I'm looking into that one right now, so.
So Wabley Shaw Rock could be impacted, what other ones could be impacted?
I know, we're still reviewing the full, a full list of them, so.
It's just two right now?
That I'm aware of, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, with any exemptions, it's, you're going to look at it case by case basis with these. You know, sometimes they can get into where, if it's incidental to the use of the entire property too with it. So we're looking into all of them, so. And we'll have to reach out to some of the entities to see how they're being used. So.
I find this kind of troubling. A week ago, we had legislators here talking about we should do everything in our power to cut property taxes, and they're trying to do the same thing. Aren't we effectively raising people's property taxes by doing this?
Well, I mean, from the leases that I looked at, the county's getting, and you correct me if I'm wrong, about $118,000 a year for it, for the rent for this. And I guess that's probably always been the understanding, this is used to curb property taxes with it. So I mean, on the county side, I just did some calculations. It's about $9,000 that wouldn't be coming back if you pay the property tax bill. Obviously, some of it's coming back to the general fund, the portion that, that's levied for that. The rest of it would go to the other taxing bodies that are involved with it. So in essence, it's about $9,000 reduction in that. You know, and that's what those taxing bodies are losing out on, on their budget part of it. You know, and the same thing, it's, yeah, it's paying, but it's, that amount that's being paid is, is, you know, that's about $14,000 that could, and tax-wise, could be saved by everybody else too if it's spread out among everybody.
But somebody's going to pay that $14,000 too.
Either way, on either side of it, yeah, yeah, I agree. You know, and it's just like, you know, you're, this renting out farmland, I would probably say is not part of the government, or Breamer County's objectives, you know, unless they're not in the business to renting out farmland. You're in direct competition with other farmers that are renting out their land too, with that, I would say.
So Dewey, in my sense, you know, $13,000 was coming into our revenues. Now we're going to get, you know, $4,000 of it. So a good chunk of it's going to Chipola School District. It may reduce some of these property taxes and the school finance form, but state's a big winner.
I mean, I don't know, I.
There are ways to look at it. My idea is, no matter how you slice it.
Yeah, there is.
You're looking at $14,000 of additional taxes, somebody's going to pay.
Yeah, and I, I did reach out to Darius, and I think he agreed that this should be taxable.
So I think it's great information. I appreciate this. And once again, in FY '28, we'll make sure that we pay the tax. I hate to get on the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And as you communicate with other, other entities, it'd be nice to get an update, making sure.
Sure, sure, yeah.
We don't want to catch the school off guard again.
Yeah, I mean, and exemptions is something that I'd say a lot, you know, my, I'd say myself and all their counties too are catching up on. I mean, they'll add edges, you know, it's exempt why, you know, it's owned by a government entity, why really look at it? Well, we're supposed to look at them by code. We're supposed to have values on everything. So Breamer County has always been, when I started back in '02, we were actually picking up all the exempt properties. We were probably ahead of a lot of people with that. So we do have a valuation on every property within the county.
Maybe we should turn the county home back into a full-scale county home setting and start farming it ourselves again.
I could pick up rock. That's about my extent of farming.
What percentage of, we're clearly, small number of, how many counties have farmland that they rent out?
I don't know that.
Can you find that out?
I probably, yeah, I probably could.
And then can you find out how many of them do tax themselves for that?
I could try to, I could try my best to find that out, so.
Seems like it has to be public records.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, it's, yeah, no, I actually put something else out on our association to kind of check it out. So it's always just depends who responds to it and what's not, so I can't control that part of it, but.
Corey, any thoughts?
No, I, I was, I saw this original conversation on Basecamp, and it's, I look at it, it's not really new taxation. It's just apportioned to the proper entities, you know, just seeing that it's.
I would agree with that.
It seems like the way it is right now, we're kind of been the bulk beneficiary. We're, we're still going to get government agencies benefiting from it. It's just portioning out appropriately.
I'd agree.
There will be some gaps that have to be filled in to Dewey's point.
Anything else?
Thanks, Aaron.
No, thank you. I'm always open to any discussion with us, so you know where I'm at.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're next.
Got six sentences landed?
Don't say a word.
What sentence the deadline?
Yesterday, so we'll open them next week.
Oh, next week?
Yep.
We missed the agenda.
Yeah, we had some miscommunication. He put it out yesterday, so I thought we were just opening it at my office. Then I went to him yesterday, I said, how many do we get? He said, well, I'm going to the auditor if you'd open tomorrow. I said, well, I can try, but we're a little late for that, so we'll do them next week. I sent a note out there, buddy.
Okay. We missed a few last week.
All his?
I fixed.
What's your trial like that now?
Ryan? Ryan Kuntcher, tech in the back. Perfect. Keep them busy.
Here Megan had her babies, Megan and Brock. Megan and Brock eats.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, last week. Babies aren't home yet, they were 35 weeks, so.
They twins?
Yeah. Still working to regulate body temp, but should be home by the end of the week. So we're looking at a finished office here in the near future. Bridge 121, our one that was closed up on 150th, they're hoping to finish that up this week. Panels got set, BCI came and set those two weeks ago, I believe, and so we've been working on finishing that out, so hopefully that road will be open end of this week, excuse me. We had one new employee start this week, so our maintenance roster is full going into winter time. We have a couple items for next week, we have a bid opening for another bridge, similar design to what we've done with the steel abutments, steel pile and precast concrete deck, that'll be up in the northwest corner of the county next spring. We're putting that out for bid this week because there's typically 10 to 12 week lead time on getting those panels built, so we're hoping this way, there's a little less delay between us getting the substructure work done and getting them in to set those. It'll be a matter of working with the contractor. The issue we run into before is if they're ready with their panels before we're ready with the bridge, then they want to come and be on top of us trying to get them set, so we'll hopefully get a good contractor that works with us on that, but otherwise, this should save us some time on those bridge projects. No parking ordinance will be next week as well. And then the only other update I had is we did have a, excuse me, ICAB visit a couple weeks ago, we did respond to a couple of those items, so we've got a couple things to fix. We had a pretty good visit with Todd out there, the only items he wrote up for us were, our oil rag bin was not one with a closing top, and evidently, they had a fire station burned down under similar situation, so he recommended that, so we've got one of those on order. And then our sanders, there's a safety bar on the back where the auger moves the sand to the spreader. There's a safety bar on the new ones that doesn't allow you to open that auger cover without the hydraulics turned off. Our older ones don't have that, and evidently, there was a fatality at a county, I think he said in west central Iowa, where they didn't have a safety bar, opened up the auger, and somebody got caught in it, so, yeah, not good. So those are the only two comments we had from that visit.
So are you going to be able to rectify the old ones?
Yep, the old ones, we're going to add, we're going to retrofit some safety bars on there similar to the new style, so we'll be able to fix all those up at, when we put them on the trucks this fall, so.
With welding?
Yep, yep, and we happen to have a guy that's pretty darn good at welding, so that works out.
He is pretty awesome at welding.
He is, he really is. Those are the only updates I have this morning. A little bit rapid fire there.
So the, I may understand the rag bin one, the idea is to keep it from getting oxygen because I've, I've always thought that.
Yeah, the.
If you put the rags like that and.
Yeah, the ones that are approved for it have an automatic shutting lid, and then it seals it off so that no more air can get in. Well, that's the idea behind it.
Gotcha.
So it may start on fire, but it's the lack of oxygen.
Yeah, shouldn't go anywhere at least, and it's a metal container, so it shouldn't light the container or anything like that, it'll stay contained.
Where are we at, Landon, and I know it's been a long time since we discussed this, you may need to look back through. V 56 and 93, I know that they told us that we'd have to assume all maintenance, but then some other county got around that?
Yeah, I.
Is that something we could?
I asked about that, V 56 and 93, and also C 33 and 63. They did it with the other county on a grant, they would still expect us to take over maintenance in perpetuity, which would give us the liability. Currently, what we've got planned is we're going to redo the rumble strips at both locations with that H SIP grant that we got, we'll do that next year. We've got that going on in all of our county road to state highway intersections, we'll redo all the rumble strips. We have not moved forward with a flashing stop for that reason.
Is there a flashing yellow, we have the stop ahead sign, that's yellow?
Yep.
Is there, are there?
We could do an advanced flashing yellow, that might help with some of that.
The reason I ask is, I had a, it wasn't a near miss for me, in fact, it wasn't a near miss for anybody, but I was eighth of a mile down the road this week one day, and I saw a car finally stop right in the middle of the intersection coming southbound, northbound. I don't know if they didn't see it, or if they didn't pay any attention to the rumble strips, because those rumble strips are still there during when I drive them, but I know some of ours are really bad.
Right.
We've got to do a lot of them, but it just seems like that intersection.
Something to call attention to.
I know the DOT tells us we haven't had enough events there, but I remember a fatality that.
Right.
On a stop sign violation.
I'll look into that, something to call attention to would be good, yeah.
That's even a dangerous corner, so maybe we could do the stop ahead yellow flashing signs.
That's a good thought, I'll look into that. That's possibly one that we could get on that same H SIP grant too, the, the highway safety one, so I'll, I'll dig into that, see if that would be covered under that one. We did have another blow through at C 33 and 56 here about a week ago. That's got new rumble strips, flashing red stop, and I don't know if, I don't know if there's anything we can do there, it's, it's almost like people just get going and forget they're driving. That's the.
I suspect that they're.
Yeah, right, probably.
I'm seeing more and more of that again, and it seems like after July 1st, there was a.
Brief.
Brief time where people paid some attention to it, and now all you got to do is drive down 380 and look over to the person passing you, and it scares you.
When I drive home on 63, almost always, you can tell who's doing it when you come up to the DOT work on that bridge. There'll be somebody flying up in the lane that's closed, and all of a sudden, they got to stop and try and get over, invariably, they're doing this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you report them?
I haven't yet.
Usually, they blow by you so fast.
Right, yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Hope the winter guys are ready for winter, because I feel like it could be an interesting one.
We're due for a big one too, we've been pretty lucky the last couple of years.
Thank you, Landon.
Thank you.
Recession till 10:15.
Shelley, Sunshine Glass, I know the city is, all the board members have to take it, same, same for the county, right? Who's going to monitor that? I mean, it's, who's going to take in that they took the course? Is it going to be up to the directors?
City clerks, they take it online, they take a lot of that information, probably show the records as the official church of good government, so.
So on your spreadsheet of all the members that we have, I have a column saying, okay, wire, get it tested yourself, the date they took it.
One, there's, there's a certificate that has to be drawn, by the pur trainers, so that's part of the trainer program. Then the trainers, as I agreed, be sending copies of that to various personnel agencies.
Pretty soon, ask me a webinar, you just have to be able to take a webinar, take a test.
And I just submitted my package to be a trainer.
Okay.
Which would be pre-charge with the intent to do it quarterly, or make it available. And so, yeah, I just, I just relaxed them, so if people needed it, I could hopefully be a trainer.
So the comp plan, do they need a, do they have a comp plan group?
That's a task force, not a people for people, or just ask.
I mean, that's what, yeah, everybody's kind of figured.
We should talk later about how it was created.
Okay, so Shelley's going to be the person?
Yeah, for the county.
Shelly, here Megan had her babies, Megan and Brock, Megan and Brock eats.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, last week. Babies aren't home yet, they were 35 weeks, so.
They twins?
Yeah. Still working to regulate body temp, but should be home by the end of the week, hopefully, things go well.
Brent, would you be our, going into closed session, sign man here in about two minutes? After we make the motion, would you do that?
And there's nothing after the closed session, is that correct? So I can start it on the video as I get back.
Adjourn.
The video we post, the vote adjourned, we don't do that.
Meeting at 11:30 here today, I don't know why.
A motion that we move into closed session to discuss strategy with council matters that are presently in litigation, where litigation is imminent with summit.
Would you state the code first?
By Iowa Code 21.5 subsection 1 and C.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of going into closed session, please say aye. Roll call.
Ron Corris?
Aye.
Luinsky?
Aye.
Lowbrand?
Aye.